And we're excited to be working with Brenda Dominguez, who did some of the paintings. She's an artist in town, some of the mural paintings. And she, we're going to bring a chalk art contest this year to the festival. And I'll be putting that out pretty soon. And it'll be back on Taylor Road. So, of course, we're looking for volunteers to help that day to make it a great community event. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Okay, moving on. All items on the agenda will be open to public comment before final action is taken. Speakers are requested to restrict comments to the item as it appears on the agenda and stay within three minutes of a time limit. The mayor has the discretion of limiting the total discussion time for an item. Written material introduced in the record. Citizens wishing to introduce written material into the record at the public hearing on any item are requested to provide a copy of the written material to the town clerk. Okay, and we're going to open it up for public comment right now. This time's reserved for those in the audience who wish to address the council on subjects that are not on the agenda. The audience should be aware that the council may not discuss details or vote on non-agenda items. Your concerns may be referred to staff or placed on the next available agenda. Okay, three minutes.
Got my timer out. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Miguel Yucovitz, 5911 Craig Court, Loomis, California. Jen stole a little of my thunder. I'm here to ask, in the old days, before we got the new pool, we used to swim five days a week at the old pool. And now we're down to one day a week. And there's nobody using that pool in the afternoon. So I'd like to see the council go back to, ideally, five days a week. Now, maybe just from one to four, because I've been there several times, and around four o'clock, the attendance really drops off. Also, I'd like to see you consider having Wednesday night as family night. There were some concerns about some people. If you work, you can't go swimming with your family. And that pool's so big that the swim team, all the community needs is about four lanes, a shallow part, and a couple lanes. They don't need that whole pool. Matter of fact, they just use one side anyway. So having a family night where the family could come. So I'd like to have you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Pam Blake. I live on Angelo Drive. And I would like to see something done with the road condition of Boynton Road. It needs to be replaced. I know there's lots of potholes. They've been temporarily fixed and stuff. And I travel that road two to three times a week to go to Anytime Fitness. So I'd like to see something done about that, because on this back page, I see we're spending money elsewhere on number nine and number 10, which is on the agenda. And for Sean, on the, now the fourth month, the fourth Tuesday of the month, maybe something healthier than donuts.
I like donuts. I'll lick it, probably bring a fruit, too. I just won't eat it if nobody shows up.
Fruit, bagels.
Yeah.
Donuts have fat, the entire fat content for a day in a donut, so, thank you.
William Quinville, Sr., 6280 Horseshoe Bar Road. Tim was going, is he going to come up or not? I just saw that. The mayor was looking. It's him. Couple quick things. I noticed on the calendar of events, this is listed at a 7:30 event on the webpage. Maybe somebody could fix that. And is not the planning commission moved to seven o'clock also? Just thought somebody might check that time, because people may be late.
What town area is that?
When you go on the town website and you click on calendar, it had this meeting starting at 7:30.
We're trying to get some stuff.
Okay. I just, yeah, just, we're working on it. The other thing is, is, God, we've had a wicked uptick in crime stuff going on. Property crimes and people losing stuff. And, I mean, somebody stole a Buddha off somebody's porch. Really? What is going on here? When I moved here in 2015, I left stuff out. I lock up everything now. So I don't know what we got to do, but something's going on. The poor liquor store got hit two days in a row. And another liquor store got hit, by the way, over in South Whitney. They had the same kind of break-in. So, don't know what's going on, but it's getting bad. And just an FYI, this charming lady, having 31 years here, remember, all of you, she knows where all the skeletons are buried.
I think so.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Is planning commission at seven or 7:30? Anybody else? Public comment for items not on the agenda. This thing in the hearing, none. Will close public comment. Moving on, adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, we need to pull item number eight off of the consent agenda for discussion when we get to that point.
Okay. We have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Make a motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is adopted. Opportunity, public comment on the, let's bring it back here. Anybody wanting to speak on the agenda from the public?
Page 4010, please.
We'll get to that in just a minute. That's consent. Okay. At this time, opportunity to comment on the consent calendar.
We had a poll, 10, poll eight.
Okay. Polling 10 and polling eight. Items one through seven and nine, do we have a motion to approve?
We'll make a motion to approve items one through seven and nine.
Second.
Okay, motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is adopted. Okay, so, item eight. Sean?
I would actually like to put that into the regular, excuse me, into the regular council agenda. Move it probably down after the public hearing, because it's going to take a little bit of explanation.
After 14, is that what you're?
Yeah, we'll put it at the very end.
Item 10. Any comment from council on item 10?
Good job. Question, Miguel?
Okay, let's open it up for public comment. Item 10?
Yes, Miguel Yucovitz, 5911 Craig Court. Are we, is this going down King Road, the striping?
Yes.
From Taylor on down?
Correct.
I just drove it. It striped. So it has a nice yellow line and bumpers up here by the school. My concern is, at some point in time in the next couple of years, that's going to need to be resurfaced. And if you put, I'm not sure if you put thermoplastic down and you resurface it, do you rip out the thermoplastic? I was going to suggest, before I drove down it, just put a yellow line, like we did on Sweater. But I noticed that there's a fairly visible yellow line all the way down King right now. So I don't know why we would do it right now. And I think, what I'd like to see is that King be resurfaced in the next year or two. It's pretty bad. And if you put the thermoplastic, the way I understand, you rip it all up when you resurface it. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that does have the center line striping from Taylor to Boynton, which is that stretch. We do thermoplastic. We're starting to do thermoplastic here in Loomis, because it lasts much longer. We're hitting our more dangerous streets. Typically, our crews were doing paint, and we were having to have our crews go out every year, every other year. And that's a bit dangerous for them. So the thermoplastic will last up to about 10 years. I don't have King, that section of King, being overlaid scheduled yet. It is one of our worst roads. It is in line to get an overlay, but it's not on our five-year CIP yet.
Yeah.
So, in my opinion, the thermoplastic's worth it to paint it now, so we don't have our crews out there doing paint a couple of times in the next couple, in the next four years.
Thank you, Brett. Any comments from council? Any other public comment on that item? Okay. We have a motion to approve eight?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item carries. Okay, so, that leads us to item 11, sale of town-owned property located at 3800 Taylor Road.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just realized, a good thing about the big flower thing here is it blocks cricket's view from the camera, so if she's giving me the stink eye, then people can't see her doing that on the camera.
So I did a, just a PowerPoint to kind of keep me on track with what I wanted to talk about. So we're talking about the sale of 3800 Taylor Road. That's the WW molding property that we've been talking about now since 2017. I'm going to run through a little bit of a chronology of where we started and how we got there, and then kind of show the updated stuff as well. And then get into the more salient points of the purchase agreement. So the process that we're going to follow tonight, staff presentation, you need to open the public hearing. This is a notice public hearing. You need to open the public hearing, receive testimony from members of the public, close that public hearing, deliberate, and then take action. Staff recommendation to you is to adopt the resolution that's in your packet that approves the sale of the property to the Loomis Mill Group. I think it's the Loomis Mill Group LLC. And I think most folks know that that Loomis Mill Group LLC is comprised of Scott Pears from High Hand Nursery and Cafe, and the Gowan family from Loomis Basin Brewery. So, the town acquired that property in 2008 as part of a multi-parcel pickup from UP. The property that we picked up started, this property actually goes all the way down to the fence at the end of the UP property, runs all the way up. The town, when we purchased those properties, we actually purchased a piece of where the High Hand parking lot is. We ended up signing that to Scott later. It jumped the High Hand property, and then we picked up along the backside where that parking lot is, the gravel parking lot where the stage was, and the, oh, sorry, the Blue Anchor Park area, all the way up. Total property that we're talking about today is 4.8, 4.08 acres. The previous business wasn't operating for many years, and the property was being illegally subleased, had been illegally lived on. There were multiple violations of the lease, significant code enforcement issues, and it become a blight in the town. And I'm going to show you some pictures about what, to show you what that looked like before. So this is the front. This is after it was cleaned up, partially before the prior tenant left that building. You can see, there's a bunch, like, tires and stuff here. This is actually an oil drum that was left open for, I have no idea how long, but long enough for the oil and the rain to mix. The oil got up to the top, spilled out, and contaminated the site for probably about a third, probably about a 50-foot-long stretch. It's about 10 feet wide. And down, probably about a foot and a half. This is the inside of the building. You can't see the skin of the building anymore, so all the siding's gone. But this is what was left in the building when the tenant vacated. And so you can see just a mix, like, a bunch of different stuff that was left inside the building. This is one of the outbuildings that was either burned down, or partially burnt, or it was scavenged, or I'm not really sure what happened with this. Completely full of mold. Thank God, no lead-based paint stuff was on there. These buckets here, we had really no idea what was in those, but they were able to be taken to just a regular recycling facility and gotten rid of. This is a view from, so, that building, this is the backside of that building right here, so you can see just piles and piles of stuff. I got a couple pictures. I didn't put them in the presentation, but there were just loads and loads and loads of wood that was used for the milling operation. So significant, significant fire hazard back there because of that, just dry kindling wood that's been sitting there for, I don't really know how long. You can see on the back, and you can't really see this, but there's actually three different car transmissions and an engine up here that was on top of this pallet structure. Another shot. This is actually, let's see, that would have been kind of down here. Just a bunch of debris and junk that was left on the property. This is the backside of the second part of the warehouse, so you can see these kind of cinder block, not cinder block, but concrete blocks here. This was wide open. And so when the previous tenant vacated, I would go through there maybe once every couple weeks or so. I walked into homeless encampment there at one point. Not a lot of people there, but there was obviously somebody sleeping in there, because they figured out that there was still electricity. Somehow found a little mini fridge, bought a 12-pack of natural ice, and had it ready to go. There was only, I think, three or four left. They were cold. I didn't drink them. This is the inside of that. So you can see, completely full of stuff, dirt floors. The living quarters that was kind of scabbed in here was part of a tough shed, kind of complex thing. So there was a tough shed here that had a, kind of like an RV toilet, put into it that, I don't know where that was being emptied. There was no water on the site that I, there was water, oh, water heater, but there was no actual bathroom facility that was a legal bathroom facility. And then there was also a living area kind of down over here that you don't see. That was completely full of mold. Before the tenant vacated, there was a, an RV stored on site, two trailers, and I believe there might have been a cab over camper at one point. And so, not sure where the, like, habitability stuff was going on. I don't know how they could have lived in the other part for very long, but they did. So, back in 2017, July 2017, my very first meeting here in Loomis, council directed staff to look at the divestment, which is the selling of the town-owned properties. The appraisal, so there's a significant process that we've got to follow if we're going to be selling, divesting properties. The first part of that is doing the appraisal. So we had the appraisal done. Council authorized contract with Bender Rosenthal to do the appraisal of that property, plus the other town-owned properties. We've talked about the Mandarin Court property, and council's decided not move forward with any of that sale. This was one, and then the Heritage Park side as well. So the appraisal was completed in April 2018. Council gave direction to move forward with selling the property in May of 2018. The RFP for redevelopment of the property was approved by council in August of 2018. That RFP, it's in the packet, but it was created in a way that kind of cast a net as widely as possible. We didn't say what we wanted to go there, other than having to be a revenue-generating business that matched with the zoning, obviously, and that would bring people to that part of town. And then also, you know, complement the existing uses that were there with High Hand and the other businesses over there. So the RFP was released in August of 2018. There was a 60-day response period. That story of selling the property was actually picked up by the Sacramento Business Journal. And so we got several discussions with developers about the property. I think I talked to five, I think five. Ultimately, we only had one proposal submitted though. And so council awarded the exclusive development rights to the joint venture, which is now the Loomis Mill Group LLC, in December of 2018, and purchase negotiations started at that point. At the same time, the potential developer requested a Phase One environmental assessment, which is basically looking at real high-level potential environmental contamination on the site. He asked that to be done, and so we went forward with that on a contract with GeoCon. GeoCon is the company that did the original Phase One and Phase Two when we bought the properties from UP. So back in 2008, they did the Phase One and the Phase Two. And it made sense to have them do the next version of the Phase One, because they're really just updating what they already had. They already had all the information, and so they were able to do it at a much lower cost. So that was done in mid-Febuary. The results of that showed the need for an updated Phase Two because, especially because of the oil spill that we had, and then the diesel contamination that I'm going to talk about in a little bit on-site, that wasn't really well-defined in the original Phase Two that was done. And so council approved the contract for that Phase Two in March of this year. So rather than spending the money on the Phase Two, GeoCon was able to work with the Regional Water Quality Control Board, which is the state agency that controls all this, because diesel going into the soil could potentially end up contaminating groundwater. So the regional board is the entity that we end up working with. And so rather than doing the Phase Two, they were able to show the regional board the extent of the contamination from the Phase Two, plus the new Phase One that was done. And instead of doing all the extra work, they were able to use that money to go straight into creating what's called a remedial action plan, or RAW. That RAW spells out the cleanup process for the site. And so that was not brought to council. There was no reason to bring it to council, but we did do the notification that was required. And the regional board approved that RAW in June of this year. But council did approve a contract with GeoCon for the remediation in July. So that work started in early August, should be completed after remediation, site is backfilled, and that's the agenda item that's going to be coming up at the end of the council meeting tonight. Separate action by council in May to reimburse Scott Pears for the debris cleanup of the site. So I showed you all that junk that was on the site. There's no way to get that remediation stuff done with all that stuff there. And frankly, GeoCon and the water board needed to look at a clean site to see if there was anything else out there. So that reimbursement was approved by council in May. So now that the remediation and the cleanup is done, and negotiations are complete on the property sale, council can act on the proposed sale of the property. And I talked about a little bit of that specific process, but this outlines it better. So the town met all the requirements of state law, including a summary report that's part of the packet. We published the public hearing, obviously, which we're holding now. And then the culmination of all that process is the public hearing tonight, where council can take action for the sale. And then I wanted to talk about the proposal by the Loomis Mill Group. So the idea that they have is to move, and what's in their proposal, that's also part of the packet, is moving the Loomis Basin Brewery production facility from the Sweater site, and that includes the Tasty Room. So it would go from Sweater Road over to this site. They're going to put a bakery in, our charcuterie, which is fancy word for meat and cheese, and provision store, which is a fancy word for, like, really small groceries. And an outdoor beer garden and amphitheater. I actually was walking through the site with the guy from Placerville, John Church, Clarici. He's like, you know what charcuterie means in French, right? And I was like, yeah, meat and cheese. He's like, yeah, exactly. So I got the logos here, High Hand and LBB. This is a drawing of what they want to do. So they're intending to use the existing kind of steel frame structure as the basis for the building. They want to keep the hopper that you can see up there. They want to, so that's right here. Want to keep that hopper as part of, like, the architectural features of the building, and then really build around the existing framing that's there, the existing steel structure. So this is just kind of like an architectural rendering of what it could look like. Call it High Hand Marketplace. I don't know if that's what it's really going to be called or not, but that's what they put on the architectural rendering. The RFP that's in front of you, their proposal calls it the Loomis Cannery, and I think that that's sort of where the direction that they want to go. So keeping with the, you know, the town's agricultural themes, fruit packing themes, and tying all that together. And really, like, you know, who better to do that than the guy who, you know, took the old fruit shed and made it into this fantastic thing that we have that's a magnet for all over the place. Now, this is a schematic of what the, what the project would look like. So they're proposing to do an outdoor beer garden amphitheater that's right here at this point. That might end up moving and turning a little bit. This is just a rough kind of rendering of where that stuff would be. Lots of parking, going all the way down. This is the actual building, and then connecting it with the High Hand building over here on the side. You can see, here they have Circle Drive, and they've got an offset driveway. I told them that's not going to work. That needs to be lined up. So they're already making those adjustments in the site plan process. That site plan, assuming that council moves forward with the sale, the site plan has to come before the planning commission for a conditional use permit. So there's another step that has to go forward before this can actually get dirt moving to start building something. I'm not sure where Scott got the pictures. I think this is LBB. Looks like it. I'm not really, I think it is. But he's got this, you know, picture of the outdoor beer garden thing, with the little festival music thing going, some guy playing a guitar, and this cool guy up here with the hat. So key points of the sale. The term is five years. Interest rate per year is 4.25%. The loans will be secured through a deed of trust, assignment of rent, security agreement, and fixture filing. The interest begins accruing immediately, but is deferred until the end of the term, or the default of the loan. This doesn't say this, and it should have, but not only does the interest, the interest accrue, again, begins accruing immediately, no principal payments until the end of the five-year term as well. So it's basically a balloon payment at the end of the five-year term. All the interest is due, and the principal payment is due. Default, so in the event of an uncured default on terms of the agreement, town will follow the terms of default as described in the agreement. And basically, what that means is we can pull the note. And then the town will be reimbursing Scott $6,000 for his purchase of the building from the previous tenant. The previous tenant, at one point, was threatening to scrap the building completely, tear it down, and sell off the metal. And because Scott had submitted his proposal, had council's direction for the exclusive development rights, he wanted to maintain that building and save it. And so he purchased that building from the tenant. And so we need to now reimburse him for that purchase, because we're selling him the property. So process, I talked about before. Open the public hearing, receive testimony, close that public hearing, council deliberation and action, and then, as I said, staff recommendation is to adopt the resolution approving the sale of the property to the Loomis Mill Group. I thought I had pictures of the cleanup, but I don't. So later on in the agenda, you've got the agenda item to approve the contract for backfilling the hole that was dug. So we originally thought that that hole, the contamination site, was going to be 1,000 cubic yards. That's what council approved in the contract award to GeoCon. After they got there and started digging out the contaminated soil, it ends up, it's going to be, it's actually 2,000 cubic yards of dirt. It's about 15-foot hole deep, 15-deep, 15-foot-deep hole. And if you've ever been in Scott's basement, his basement constantly has water, because of some sort of a spring that kind of runs down this direction and ends up down there. So that hole was being filled with water as they were digging it out. We obviously can't leave a 15-foot, 15-foot-deep hole. That was probably, I don't know, 30, 20 feet wide, 30 feet wide. Yeah, pretty big hole. So we don't want that to turn into a contaminated swimming pool for people to end up drowning in. So we had GeoCon bring in crushed rock, fill dirt, or fill, to fill up the hole to the point, at least where the water was below it, stop that water from, you know, filling up. They'll place some, a geofabric on top of that. They're going to put clean fill dirt, six inches, I think, on top of the fabric. And then, the contract that we have coming forward at the end of the meeting, that contractor will bring in the clean fill dirt from where the stage was. That hillside's being taken down. That parking lot will be tripled in size by taking the hillside down. Stage has been moved, and we're trying to make sure that we've got an appropriate location for that. But take that hillside down, that dirt gets put back into the hole, and then the contractor will need to compact it. And Brett will go through those changes when we come to that. They ended up having to bring a baker truck in, which is a kind of a trailer that the water is pumped out of and stored, and then recycled off-site because of the diesel contamination that was in the water that was coming through. The water itself wasn't contaminated, but once it leached through the dirt there, there was diesel remnants in it, so they had to store that. They weren't anticipating doing that either. So even though all that stuff happened, they were still able to get it done in the schedule that they had recorded. So they're, I think they're pretty much wrapped up now. They might be doing a little bit of compacting on the soil themselves, put that fabric down on. So that's moving forward pretty quickly.
Okay.
So that's it. I can answer questions if we have them about the purchase agreement. Jeff is here, because he's the one who wrote the purchase agreement with his colleague, Amara, because that's what we pay attorneys to do.
Comments, questions from council? Okay. Well, first of all, I want to compliment staff. This is, this, you're right, this was one of the first things we talked about when you came aboard, and I never doubted it was the right thing to do. I know that previous councils have tried to do something with this, and nothing ever materialized for one reason or another, the economy, or the efforts were put elsewhere. But it can't be understated that this is a major achievement. It will drastically transform our downtown, and ultimately expand our downtown experience there. And as far as bringing in economic revenue and tax revenue for the town, it has great potential there, too. So I'm really excited. These guys, the LBB folks and the High Hand folks are, you know, we couldn't have asked for a better team to take this on. It's a big project. There's a lot of heavy lifting that they're going to have to do, but they are 100% committed. And I'm really excited to see this in the future. And they're moving And they're moving quickly, too. They want to go gangbusters on this, so. Great job. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you. I should add quickly, too, that neither of the LLC members are able to make it tonight. Scott is actually in Chicago for an event that he had to go to, and the Gallons aren't able to come either. They're also out of town. So I do have Scott, if I need, if we have, if there's a question for Scott. He's basically been authorized to speak on behalf of the project and then also sign the documents. If there's a question that I can't answer, he's ready to respond, I just got to send him a text message, so.
I did have a question, I know it's probably too early, but we do expect to pick up some parking on what would be the west side of that area, right? I mean, that's the idea.
This area, I'm sorry, oops. Over here?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I mean, he's maxed out on Sundays at High Hand, and so this is going to hopefully relieve some of that pressure there.
Right, 100%. Because the amount of spaces that you have here aren't going to be filled by this. If there's a big event at the amphitheater, then it would be filled. But the combination of parking between here and here, and also the big, yeah, the giant new parking area that we're going to be creating, I think will more than accommodate the parking concerns.
Okay. Great, okay. Any comments before we open it up for public comment? Okay, public comment. Anyone from the public? Anybody bring champagne?
Pam Blake, Angelo Drive. I just want to know, is the town making any money on this property? I don't know when it was bought, how much it was, but you're talking a five-year with a balloon payment. So I'm just hoping that we're going to be receiving some profit revenue at the end of five years.
I'll let staff address that.
Thank you.
So we purchased in 2008. Let's see how many parcels it was, but the total amount that we paid for all of those parcels was 1.3 million. The Bender Rosenthal appraisal that we received put the property best market, or best used and market value at 710. So we're basically recovering about half of, yeah, about, yeah, about half of the purchase price from this one sale. And then we've got a park, you know, Blue Anchor Park, we've got the big parking lot that'll be created where the stage was at the end of Walnut. And we've got, you know, the town hall area here. So being able to recover half of the cost of that purchase off of one property, I think.
Yeah, that sale was a bundle of properties. This was part of that bundle.
Right, and it wasn't.
And we're holding, we currently hold the other properties.
That's right. And I don't, the purchase contract that Cricket found for me with UP didn't break out parcel by parcel what the cost was. It was just, this is the amount. So I can't really say, I mean, I would think if you had looked at the, you know, appraised value of like the park area now, the Blue Anchor Park area, and the town hall area, and the multimodal lot here, that value is probably going to be higher than what this would be. I don't know that for sure, though, just because of proximity to downtown, closer to downtown.
Okay. Any other public comment?
I just wanted to say that this is a wonderful project, and both these business owners have proven to have successful businesses in town. So I just, I hope you'll say yes.
Thank you, Jenny. Any other public comment?
Hello, council. I'm a junior at Delaware High School. And we recently started an environmental club at the high school. So we were just concerned about the environmental concerns for this project. So you were saying about the Geo, what was it? Yeah, GeoCon. Have they finished their phases, and have they realized that there's no contamination with the project?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the end result of the contamination, scooping out the diesel-impacted soil, will result ultimately in a clean site. So right now, that site's contaminated, or it was contaminated, the dirt's been taken out. But once that's completed and done, then the site will be deemed clean by the state. So it's not the town declaring that, we don't have the ability to say that it's clean or not, the state has to issue us that letter. There is a possibility that they might require an additional, like groundwater monitoring well. And so the purchase agreement allows for that to go in, if that needs to go in. But talking to the gentleman from the state, the regional board that was out during the digging, they had somebody on site for most of the time. He felt that doing this work that we're doing, getting it all the way down to basically bedrock, well, there's no reason to do the additional groundwater monitoring, so.
And to take it a step further, this project, this is, we're not approving a project tonight, we're approving a sale, or we're asked to approve a sale. And so this, when blueprints and plans come forward, that will be a whole different set of review. And the environmental impacts on the project, when it comes forward, will be, have to be reviewed on its own merits. So this is really just a sale, an ask to approve a sale. Any other public comment?
If I can make one clarification, you have approved an environmental document for this. So this, the environmental work has been completed, so absent something new showing up, there won't be any additional environmental review required for approval of the project.
Okay, thank you. Except for potentially a CEQA or NEGDEC.
You have, you approved back when you did the contract with GeoCon, you approved a categorical exemption.
Yeah, we processed it at the July council meeting. So council approved that cat X categorical exemption for the cleanup portion of it.
Cleanup.
But that, but the categorical exemption also described the sale of the property and the proposed development. So unless something dramatically changes between now and the time they come in for the use permit that they're required to get, there should not be a need for any additional environmental documents.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. Okay, any other public comment? Seeing and hearing none, we'll bring it back to council. Any other questions, comments? Okay.
I'm excited for this. It's just a big step towards our downtown, I think. It's going to create a great environment. Look at what some of our surrounding cities around us have done with parks and outdoor amphitheaters and things like that. And it's just going to be a great experience for a lot of our local clubs and organizations to do events at. So I'm excited for the project. And I don't, like Mayor Andereco said, I don't think you could find two guys that are more ambitious to take on this project. So I'm excited.
Okay. We good? We going to entertain a motion?
Motion approved.
Okay, motion second. Let's do a roll call, Cricket.
Councilmember Blake?
Yes.
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 Aye. Okay, item passes. Thank you, Sean. Okay, moving on to item 12, Placer Mosquito and Vector Control District. We have a report here. Executive Director or General Manager, Joel, from the Placer Mosquito and Vector Control District is here. He's going to give us a presentation updating the town on the district's current activity. Let's give him a chance to catch up and set up his presentation.
It's okay. I can do without. No worries. I have a copy here, too. No problem.
Timing is good to hear from him, by the way, right? Everybody swat mosquitoes all summer long? No? You're good? Joel, how you doing?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. Pleased to be here. It's been a little while since I've visited Loomis. So again, my name is Joel Bittner, I'm the General Manager of Placer Mosquito and Vector Control District. We service all of Placer County, most of it. We service through our main headquarters in Roseville, but we do have a substation near Truckee. Our county is so big and diverse, and there's about 30 different species of mosquito that do all sorts of different things at all sorts of different times, and the things that we're most concerned about is biting you. So we try to keep track of that. We try to understand what the risks are for getting bitten by mosquitoes. It could be as, I would say, as simple as getting bitten a bunch, which is obviously something we want to avoid. But obviously, our bigger concern is transmission of mosquito-borne disease, and West Nile is at its peak right now. So basically, our mission, we're an independent special district. We're here to basically prevent people from getting sick. And we are a part of the public health system. And of all of the infectious diseases that are out there, vector-borne diseases are really the only ones that we can deal with that do not require people getting sick first to do that. So if you think about it, you know, tuberculosis or something like this, you wait till people get sick, they go to the doctor, and then the public health people go react. With vector-borne disease, we have the ability to survey the environment, look at the adult mosquitoes, larva mosquitoes, the landscape, the weather, all of these different factors, and do some things to help prevent that human illness and human discomfort from happening. So that's, in a nutshell, what we do. I know a lot of folks think that, you know, mosquito abatement just goes out and sprays and kills mosquitoes willy-nilly. That's not what we do. We do some mosquito control, but I would say that's about 10% of what we do after really kind of figuring out what the best course of action is. So a little bit of what's going on east of us, or actually west of us, and then I'll kind of work my way here to Loomis. I have some up-to-the-moment data for you. So this year was a strange year statewide. Obviously, there were, you know, there's a ton of snow, and we've enjoyed really mild summer. It's been great to be outside. The mosquitoes kind of stayed mellow for a while, especially the ones that carry West Nile. Statewide, we've had 10 human cases and just under, just under 1,700 mosquito samples that have come up positive for West Nile. And what we mean by mosquito samples is about 60-some-odd districts throughout the state set traps, usually weekly, collect adult mosquitoes, grind them up, and test them for presence of West Nile. And that's one of those clues that we use to figure out what to do to help protect people. In Placer County, I know we've had about 148 samples that have been tested. We only test the mosquitoes that are biologically able to carry West Nile virus. And I have to do math really quick. We have right around 37 positives. We just had 11 come in like an hour ago. So we kind of pride ourselves, we have our own in-house disease lab. And statewide, and probably nationally, although I'm not sure, we can basically go from the field, through our whole testing process, and have actually actionable information to do mosquito control and, you know, be targeted and specific and effective in about 24 hours. So that's really a benefit. So we haven't had any human cases in Placer County yet, we hope we don't at all this year. Last year was a really bad one for us. We had a fatality and about nine other human cases. And throughout the state, throughout the Sacramento Valley, it was really bad. And that's pretty normal. You'll see bad years, you'll see mild years, and they'll kind of fluctuate. It's very hard to predict which ones those are. All we can do is really kind of understand the habits of the mosquitoes and try to keep them at kind of a dull roar, especially near where people live. What we're seeing over, I've been at the district for 10 years. So over the past decade, we've seen this slow but consistent movement of the West Nile vectors eastward from like the agricultural south Placer County area. We've starting to see more activity in Rockland, which is right next to Loomis. So I would say Loomis is still, has, experiences very low West Nile activity. We do get birds turned in, that's something that's very helpful for us in this area, is for residents. If you find dead birds, especially this time of year, I would say for like the next month and a half or so, if you find dead birds that aren't obviously, you know, you didn't hit it with your car. We don't care about those. We want ones that die of West Nile virus or from certain illness. You can go online, put in a dead bird report, you can call a state hotline, you can call our office, and get information about how to contact us. We'll come pick it up, and we'll pick up any bird in any condition, and we'll test it for West Nile. And that will give us, again, another one of those little clues. This time of year, you do get a dead bird, say there's a crow in your front yard, it turns out to be positive, we will give you a call back and say, hey, it was positive, give you some tips about how to, you know, protect yourselves. It's not something to panic about, but it is something that's helpful for us. We'll probably do a little more mosquito trapping and keep an eye on the area. In southern and western Placer, we have started aerial applications to combat large amounts of adult female infected mosquitoes. And that's what we do. So most of the year, we're trying to prevent those mosquitoes. But this time of year, sometimes we get large amounts of adult mosquitoes that have West Nile, and we can't let those just fly around biting people. So that's what we do in those cases. We've never had to come east of, say, you know, east Roseville. There was a lot of activity last year, kind of Granite Bay area, kind of moving northward. So again, Loomis is in a nice little sweet spot, you know, I hope you stay that way. We'll do our best to keep it that way. Things that we ask folks to do are, obviously, take a look at your property, keep your standing water to a minimum, and then really use our website. And I will, you know, I always say, call us, and you certainly can call us. But as we get more and more inquiries from the public, using our website is really the fastest way. We've really kind of optimized it. We can push problem reports straight out to our texts or our website. So although Isabel, who runs our front desk, is wonderful and be happy to talk to you, if you are fine using the website, please do that, and we can get to you much faster that way. I do want to shift, there are two other topics I want to talk about. One is, I think the last time I came here, I talked a little bit about some challenges that we are expecting with regard to invasive mosquitoes. So these are mosquitoes that came originally from somewhere. We think maybe Mexico, maybe eastern US. And they are vectors of a lot of diseases that we don't have vectors for right now. These mosquitoes are called 80s egypti, or the yellow fever mosquito, and to a lesser extent, 80s albopictus, which is the Asian tiger mosquito. The reason why these are important is that about five years ago, five, six years ago, they kind of set up shop in Southern California and been slowly moving northward. In the last two weeks, there are new detections in Modesto and in Stockton. So they're getting very, very close. The reason why this is, again, it's not, you know, I get excited about this, but, you know, I don't want anyone to go like, you know, run screaming from the room, right? You know, everyone starts itching. But it is of concern because it's a completely different kind of mosquito. They like to live around people, in your houses, in little, you know, your potted plant, little saucers and things like that. So when, to combat these mosquitoes, it's really, really important to even do that, you know, dump out your containers and do all that stuff, dump and drain. That's even more important with these new mosquitoes. One thing that would be extremely helpful this time of year, if you experience any abnormal daytime biting mosquito activity. I think, Brian, we talked a little about, you've had a lot of that experience, and in this area, there's normal daytime biting activity, and you're about done with it. Those treehole mosquitoes are pretty active in the springtime, but as we get into later summer, that should go away here. If you're seeing those sorts of activities, please give us a call. Send us a note on the website, and we'll check it out. Our normal traps don't, aren't very good at catching these invasive mosquitoes. We have to use a whole nother type of trapping system that helps us detect those. So we want to kind of know if we have anything, and then there's different things we have to do to manage those. So those two things, birds, and let us know about kind of weird mosquitoes. And they look small and black and striped, but most people aren't going to be, you know, really looking closely at mosquitoes unless you're a mosquito aficionado, I guess, I'll say, like myself. The other thing is, we're really, at our district, again, over the past decade, we've really been trying to work on making data-driven scientific decisions. So it's very easy to say, oh, yeah, you know, we always spray at this time, or we should do this, or we should do that. But we've really tried to develop kind of the rationale behind it. So if folks do have questions or are interested in that, again, please let us know, we're happy to explain that. Part of that process is to use some new technology. So we've had a pretty intensive data analysis project going on that's helping us make some of these decisions. And over the last three years, we've been even using some unmanned aircraft technology to actually make more kind of targeted mosquito control applications, as well as finding water and things like that. We just did some tests, testing up near Donner Summit, where we can actually look and see mosquito larvae in snow melt pools without having to go out on snowshoes and stuff like that. And again, trying to get ahead of the game and trying to. And again, trying to get ahead of the game and trying to control some of these mosquitoes. So we haven't done any of those operations near Loomis yet. I know the closest we've gone, I asked my pilots today, is there's some areas like western Rockland that we've been in. But I know, you know, drones flying around could be surprising or concerning to some folks. We, as a district since the beginning, we've reached out to all of the cities that we're near and all of the 911 centers. We have a good relationship with them. We actually notify them of, hey, we're going to be operating in this area, and there's pictures of what we're doing and things like that. And so far, that hasn't been a problem. So as we get, you know, potentially more involved with that near Loomis, I'll definitely be reaching out to you, Sean, and we can make sure that no one's surprised and everyone knows what's going on. We can do that. So that's all I have, unless there's questions.
Joel, any questions, comments?
Thank you very much. My husband actually did get the West Nile when we were living in the unincorporated area of Loomis long, about 10, 15 years ago. So it does happen. He's fine now, but, so this is a subject that's very near and dear to my heart. Couple of questions. Can you explain vector and vector borne?
You bet. So the scientific definition of vector is any organism that transmits a pathogen, so a disease-causing microbe or virus or bacteria. So mosquitoes are the number one, you hear mosquitoes are the number one killer in the world, the most dangerous animal. It's because of the diseases that they transmit. So malaria and West Nile and dengue and Zika and all of those things are the diseases that are transmitted by a mosquito bite. Other vectors that we focus on in Placer County are ticks, which obviously vector a whole host of tick-borne diseases. And then there's a legal definition of vector that also adds in yellow jackets, which don't carry diseases but are, definitely can be a problem. So we handle those as well.
And then you mentioned something about mosquitoes that are biologically able to transmit a disease. How do you, how do you, what's the definition of that?
So different species of mosquitoes have different capabilities to transmit, to carry and/or transmit different diseases. So for example, the ones that we are most focused on right now are called Culex tarsalis, and they are very good at transmitting a certain group of viruses that encompass West Nile. West Nile and St. Louis encephalitis and a bunch of other ones. But they won't say carry malaria. That's a different mosquito that has that relationship with that particular disease.
Okay, and for our citizens that have ponds, are you guys supplying mosquito fish?
So we consider mosquito fish a treatment. It's a biological control agent. So what we ask is for folks, if you have concerns about a pond, to send in a, we call it a problem report, and we will send someone out and we'll assess if fish are going to be the right choice, or if we use a bacteria sometimes to knock down, it's a safe bacteria for people, but it kills the mosquito larvae in the water, or we might do some other things. So we want to not just have fish going out willy-nilly, but short answer is yes, we have fish, but we're going to come and make sure they go in the right place.
Great. Thank you, Joel. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Other comments, questions, counsel?
All right, let's open it up for, thank you, Joel.
You're welcome.
So this is just an informational item, there's no action taken. Joel and the district are kind enough to come and give us an update every other year, it seems like, so.
Yeah, we can do it even more. I have a new public information officer starting in the next month or so. So we'll probably reach out and bring her around to meet everybody as well.
Okay, let's open it up for public comment. Any questions, comments of Joel? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Thank you, Joel.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure.
Okay. All right, moving on. General Plan Update 2020. This was brought forward at the request of Councilwoman Clark Creutz, and so the timing's good. Sean, are you going to give us an update? Is this your report?
I'm going to turn it over to our planning director, Mary Beth, and then she'll introduce our planning consultant, Andy Haughey. She didn't know that I was going to ask her to do that, I don't think. Keep you on your toes.
And for everybody interested, there's always staff reports on all of these items, and the staff report on this is, gives kind of a timeline on next steps moving forward. Mary Beth?
Good evening. So what we have tonight is the, kind of the launch of our general plan update. Andy Haughey, Haughey, Bruichan Associates is our town planning consultant. He put the schedule together. He will be driving the train, and I will be driving it with him. So, you know, together, we're just going to, you know, not a major update, so some technical reports and things like that. I'll let Andy explain that, but welcome, Andy.
Okay. Hi, Andy.
Hi, thank you for having us, having me. First of all, general plan, I think as we said in the staff report, is the town's constitution. So it is a driving document for the town of Loomis. The other observation, having worked here now for a few years on projects, is that the general plan seems to be working well for the town of Loomis. So the strategy we're talking about tonight is really one to adjust where necessary, but keep those things at work in place. And so it's really one to adjust. So hopefully, first of all, timeframes for the updates. California's general plan guidelines regulate and guide when communities should update their general plans. They have a 20-year planning horizon, so they suggest that your general plan be updated so that it reflects that 20-year horizon. They also suggest five-year updates, incremental updates. They also allow annual updates with a maximum number of four updates per year that you can do. And then also, there's a requirement for annual progress reporting, and I believe Mary Beth has completed your annual progress report for this year. That should be done every year. And that actually, I find, is a really good time for the council planning commission to take a look at your accomplishments, how you've done, where you need to tweak things, where you need to move forward, and use that as a guidance for updating your general plan on a regular basis, so it doesn't come out of date. Why update? Because of change. Regulations have changed. So the state of California now requires a new greenhouse gas element to be incorporated in your general plan. It requires a social justice element. Recent regulations went into effect that you now have to use vehicle miles traveled as a standard for evaluating traffic impacts within the community. Also, the city just, or the town just received its new RIN allocation. This is the number of affordable housing units that are required to be built, or to have the opportunity to be built in the town of Loomis. The community setting is updated because development has occurred. So you need to update the setting sections, you know, and reflect what's actually currently in the town. Part of that is housing site availability. Some of those sites are no longer available. Where are sites available for building housing? Community direction has changed. You just recently had a referendum, so it's probably time to revisit land use decisions based on that referendum. Also, there's been a lot of lessons learned in the couple of years I've worked here. We have found a number of places where the general plan, the zoning codes just don't match up the way they should, and they need to be cleaned up so that they're working together as they should. Technology is changing. I think self-driving cars are going, have a huge change in how we see our traffic patterns. The iPhones, when you think about it, you can now order your groceries, you can now get a Lyft, an Uber, just a number of things you're now doing that changes the patterns of life within the town of Loomis. The economy, e-commerce, I think is having a huge effect on our commercial areas and how they work. It's also having an effect on more Amazon trucks, UPS trucks, Federal Express trucks coming to your homes and your businesses that you have to provide for, that in the past were not, you know, were not anticipated. So those are just a few of the changes that have occurred in the 19 years since your general plan has, was adopted. And it's time to reflect on those and see how the general plan needs to be modified to address those. Consistency, and briefly mentioned that previously, but state law requires that all of your master plans, area plans, specific plans, the municipal code guidelines and standards are consistent with the general plan. And it goes back and forth that you have to be consistent. And I will tell you right now, some of those things are not consistent, just given the 19 years that you've been in effect. And so that consistency needs to be reevaluated, and the plan and your codes need to be updated to reflect that consistency. So we provided a suggested process, again, assuming that you have a plan that works. We're not looking at major refinements. We're looking at adjustments to reflect the changes that have occurred in the last 19 years. And so the recommendation is first, we do a consistency evaluation. That would be done with, within the staff, and just take a look at all your codes, ordinances, guidelines, and the general plan, and determine where there are inconsistencies, just to understand where we stand. Part of that evaluation would also be taking the lessons learned from projects that have been approved, haven't worked, have worked, and identify those, so that we can come to the town and the community and the agencies in the surrounding jurisdictions and say, here's where things are working, here's where things need to be fixed and adjusted to work as a baseline for beginning the general plan discussion. Then next would be the opportunity for the town and the agencies to have input into the recommendations that come out of that staff evaluation. And at that point in time, things such as, are there new technical studies that need to be done? Are there things that we haven't looked at that need to be looked at? And so basically, by the time we get through the consistency evaluation and the town agency and community input, we'll have a good idea of what needs to be changed in the general plan and in the codes and ordinances to be consistent and reflect the town's desires. At that point in time, you prepare draft updates of the plan, the ordinances. You also prepare a draft environmental impact report, which is required when you update your general plan. And then you begin circulating that. You go into public hearings, you have planning commission meetings, town council meetings. Once those are done, you then prepare a final environmental impact report, would respond to any comments, and then you go into the process of hearings and decisions by the commission and the council. We put, sorry about, this doesn't read really well up here, but we put that together in a Gantt chart, and it takes about two years to do that. And I'm not going to guarantee you that it can be in two years, because there are always things that pop up and will slow you down or change the direction. But basically, that flow chart, meeting all the deadlines, meeting all the state requirements for hearings, takes about two years. If you're not familiar with Gantt charts, when you look at the days, those are working days. So holidays and weekends are not included in those days. So if you're looking, saying, geez, that should be a seven-day week, it's a five-day week is really a seven-day week. So 22 working days are a month. So just a little bit different on when you look at these charts. But that is the process that you're going to be talking about tonight. I think the decision is for the council to give staff direction on how to proceed.
Thank you, Andy. Comments, questions from council? Jan?
Well, I'm extremely excited that we have at least, you know, a baseline to start with, and to see something with that schedule is, I think, it's very promising. I think that it's obviously perfect timing. It's been 20 years, and so we had our strategic plan about, strategic meeting with all of us, and it seemed like it was going to be something that might take longer than two years, and so, and I realize there might be some timeframe issues there, but thank you very much for this, and I'm hoping this is going to be a good kickoff for something that's going to be very important for our town. So thank you.
Any other comments?
Hey, Andy, how you doing?
I'm doing well.
Thanks for the presentation, and you mentioned one of the things that concerns me quite a bit is, due to the referendum, we have the potential inconsistency on the property at the village. I'm not sure, I can't remember the APN, the two to six dwelling unit per acre APN, about 043-8004, or 080-015, but anyway, I'm sorry. It has to do with the inconsistencies and what we can do to remedy that at this time. So the referendum did away with the PD and the development agreement.
Correct.
So we have a resolution 19-02 that talks about changing some of the setbacks, some of the standards for that PD. And without that PD being in place, especially without the development agreement, I don't believe personally, maybe I'm wrong about this, but personally, I don't believe that the resolution number 19-02 should stand as it does right now. Is there something that can be done at this point in time?
I would also say Jeff can chime in and follow up, but one, your general plan was modified with the approval of the villages, but the referendum did not change it. So that general plan is in place. We have been working with Sean and doing a matrix of looking at the general plan versus the zoning that it reverted back to, and where there are inconsistencies. That matrix is not done yet, but there are inconsistencies between your general plan and the zoning. At this point in time, if a project were to come in, we would go back to the general plan as the basis for looking at any project, because it is a constitution, it is the highest order of regulation with, within the community. So if a project came in, we'd look at the zoning, identify where the inconsistencies are, but we would look to the general plan to determine the project would be consistent with the general plan, which is required by state law. And I'm not sure about the resolution, so Jeff or Sean, if you could talk to that.
Jeff, would you like to opine on that?
I think, Andy, you've characterized it correctly. The resolution that revised the general plan is in effect. There is potential, well, there are going to be some inconsistencies. We don't know, as Andy indicated, we don't know the extent of those inconsistencies yet, and that's part of the process. Then that information can be presented. I don't, we haven't really talked about whether it would go to the planning commission first, to the council first, to get some general direction from council on how you want to deal with that. But ultimately, that inconsistency needs to be fixed, so. And that will happen one way or another. There's, as Andy indicates, the general plan is the constitution, the foundation. That doesn't mean you can't change the general plan. So that is, that will always be an option for the town to change the general plan in a way that makes it consistent with zoning, change the zoning to be consistent with the general plan, change both of them to be something different, and those are all options that are on the table. But the first step, I think, as Andy indicates, is to figure out exactly where those inconsistencies are, and that will help narrow in what changes ultimately you want to do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And just to kind of piggyback on that and kind of wrap it up, the, we had a meeting, staff meeting, to talk about those inconsistencies, what existed, what didn't. And so I asked Andy to prepare that matrix, asked Jeff and the legal side to prepare like a legal analysis of that, and we're hoping to get that presented to council in September, at least in a memo format, and then talk about it at the council level. So I'm hoping that'll be done in September. It could end up being October, but we're shooting for September for that.
Thank you, and that will add some clarity on where we are right now. Okay, any other comments, questions? Andy, so I'm not going to put you on the spot, I just want to kind of get an idea on cost. So we've, since I've been on council and I think a year before, we've socked away a lot of money every year to bank for the anticipation of the general plan update. Now, since we're not going to have to do a wholesale, complete, new general plan, in your experience, what might be the cost generally? Is it more than $1 million, less than $10 million, more than $10 million?
We just completed a similar update for the city of Sutter Creek, just two weeks ago. And that update, which was a minor update, you know, it was not massive. Took a lot of time, some 20-some meetings with planning commission and city council to figure it out, but the actual cost was somewhere probably in the $250,000 range. Typically, a major general plan update is a million plus, sometimes more. So in this process, where you go through the consistency analysis and looking at all the documents, one of the things that will come out of that is, do we need to do technical studies? Britt's been telling me that your traffic plan was updated in 2016, so it needs to be updated, and especially to reflect VMT. And one of the things that we're going to have to do is come up with thresholds for vehicle miles traveled in the town of Loomis for environmental documents. And so the technical study's going to have to do that. documents. And so the technical study is going to have to do that. But some of the other studies, your geology hasn't changed, you know, and a lot of these things have not changed. So once we get through the evaluation of the existing documents, we'll be able to identify where technical studies are required. And generally, technical studies are expensive. Okay. And then the other is, once we go through the public process, if additional technical studies are required, that's the next point to say, this is what we need to do. But hopefully, that first round, we can pretty much identify what's necessary to get you the relevant general plan update. So we should have just a general idea of, at least a quote or a cost here pretty soon? I would say as soon as that's done. And I think I looked at going through the fall and winter, doing the consistency analysis, so we don't start any of the public process until early spring, just because the holidays are just not a time to go out to the public and begin discussions. So I would say early next year, you should have a good idea of what the costs should be. Okay. And we've got approximately, how much have we set aside? Is it 700, 800?
I think we have eight now. We did 250, 250, and then three. So we have 800,000 set aside now. The 250,000 that Andy talked about in Sutter Creek, I actually started the general plan update in Sutter Creek when I was there, and I just now got done with it like six years later. So...
There was a lawsuit in there, and it stopped everything for a number of years.
But the idea of that one was really just bringing in to some, like, there was some inconsistency issues and fixing those and nothing else. And it took for, you know, a long time to get through that stuff. This, you know, with ours, we have to update the housing element in the middle, you know, during this whole process. So we've got that on top of EIR and all the other stuff that we need to do. So I'm assuming that, you know, two years, we've got 800,000 now. At the end, if we continue to put 300,000 aside, we'll be up to 1.4 million. That should be, we should be in pretty good shape.
Yeah, I would think so. One of the things also, just so you know, Mary Beth and I have been meeting with Placer County to basically do a joint housing element update. We did that in Sutter Creek with Amador County, and it was really successful since you really don't have sites for large homeless shelters and things like that. Other places in the county do. So the county's in the process where they've selected their consultant, and Mary Beth and I have both worked with that consultant in the past. And so we're still looking at what it would cost. And I think the cost will be reduced by contracting with the county's consultant, integrating it with their process, which should integrate well with the timeframe we have here. Okay, great. Any other comments from council? Okay, let's open it up for public comment. Thank you, Andy. Stay close. I'll stay close.
David Ring, 3486 Delmar. I just wanted to make a quick comment about, to you, but also to everybody here at the town talks that's going on at the beginning. It's the first Tuesday of every, of the month, starting in September. The main focus of this year is going to be on the general plan. So we're planning on having more speakers come in to discuss the general plan. So hopefully you can attend that and kind of get the community together to discuss this while the council and the town itself is also discussing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a question. So from this chart that I could see, in March is when you're looking to get, hopefully, get the community together, like you said, spring. And then that goes to the technical studies in maybe May. Would the commercial study be a technical study of our, you know, our whole town and the amount of commercials that's needed?
An economics, a commercial economics study, if that's something the community wants, then...
So in March, you came back?
If that comes up and we say this is what's needed, define it, especially you as a chamber could probably define what you'd like to see in that. My guess was we'd start all those about that time. Any other public comment?
Jean Wilson, 4301 Barton Road. And I only briefly read through the staff report and saw this tonight. This is, I think the one thing that occurs to me, having been heavily involved in the previous general plan update, is that it kind of feels like this is a top-down one compared to before when there was a lot more citizen input, it felt like, way earlier in the discussion. So that there was a steering committee, I'm not saying that it should necessarily always be the same, the same way. But I think there was more citizen input in shaping directions earlier rather than a town, than a plan being presented to them, kind of when everything is said and done. And I think one of the things that you see from what happened with the village is that there is a lot of citizen interest in what is going on and that things don't just kind of feel like they're imposed on them. So I don't, I don't know what that means for the way that we're doing this one. But I think that's a consideration that needs to be taken into account, that in this particular town, we have a lot of citizens that want to have a say in the direction that things are going. And that was, that was very apparent before with the earlier general plan. And I think you see from the village that people want to have a say in the direction that things are going now. So I just hope that's taken into account that there's adequate input from the public rather than wait and present a wonderful plan that may be a perfectly wonderful plan. But if people haven't been involved or know what's going on early enough, then you may get more pushback than you really need to have. So, you know, keep the, keep the public in mind. We are not a town that people are uninvolved.
Thank you, Jean.
Just to be clear, on the March timeframe, that was after we just identified inconsistencies and can start into that process, correct?
Correct. So the intent of the process is the public will be heavily involved during that, what we call the public process in that time chart. But what we wanted to do is at least have a good understanding of what's working, what's not working, what needs to be updated. So when we go to the public, we're not going to have, here's a recommendation. What we're going to have is, these are the issues that need to be resolved. So now let's begin discussing what those issues are. Let's discuss the resolutions to those issues. So time-wise, that's a big unknown. I think I gave it six months or so to go through the public process. It may take a whole lot longer than that. But the intent is that decisions are not made until we go through the public process. Once we go through the public process, as I noted, then we begin drafting the documents. Thank you.
If I may?
Jan? Hang on, let's, public comment?
Miguel.
Miguel.
Hi, Miguel, you're 5911 Gray Court. I'm a little confused because when we did the general plan update 20 years ago, it was, one of the main purposes was to change land use. So some of the properties were rezoned from five acres to one and a half or two acres and so on. So I agree with Jean, and there was a lot of public input. There was a planning commission, steering committee of 15 or 20 people. Joan wasn't either on it or leading it. And so there was a lot of community involvement. But I'm not sure where you say you're going to look at the inadequacies of the existing general plan and rectify them. Are you going to be doing land use, rezoning, or zoning? Are you going to look at that?
That's the, that'll be the biggest issue that we're looking at is land use and zoning, right? So I think that the difference between what was done before and now, this, what we're proposing now is, really, the only things that need to be adjusted in the general plan are, if there's an internal inconsistency, we've got to fix that, right? Because that's illegal. You can't do that. And then looking at the new elements that need to be put in, so the GHD stuff and the social justice stuff. We have to update the housing element, obviously. And then focusing on the land use and the zoning. That's, so, because we already have an updated circulation element that was done in 2016?
Yep.
14? Needs to be modified, but generally, it's the same. So the public participation is going to be significant on the land use element and on the zoning element.
It wasn't clear to me because we talked about, well, there's inadequacies. And it seemed that the major focus of this study, which was going to be these inconsistencies and not...
But we have to identify those inconsistencies first so we can know, like, a baseline to start at.
And is this the consultant that will be doing the general plan?
He's going to be steering the bus on the general plan. We'll have sub consultants that have to do, you know, geological study or whatever. Andy's not going to do that. Andy's been on, been hired on retainer for the town to basically serve as staff augmentation.
So we're not having a general plan consultant expert like we did before?
Well, he's done multiple general plan...
Oh, okay. I don't know his background.
That's the reason why we hired him.
He can send, well, maybe he can send me his bio and I can look at it. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to make, I mean, I hope that the intent of this update isn't to, here, this is what we're going to do. It's, we need to look at the inconsistencies, get those, you know, at least identified and figured out what we need to do with them. And then really focus on the land use and the zoning part. The zoning comes after, obviously, because it's driven by the land use side. But the idea is that we really need to look at the land use stuff. And it's not going to be, there's not a holistic look at all of our land use because most of that's not going to change, right? We're not going to be changing a bunch of residential ag or residential estate lots to high-density...
No.
What would you, I mean, is that something that you, if you, I would suggest you come to those meetings?
Could you please come to the, do you have any more time? Does he have any more time? I'd rather stay away from back and forth from the audience here.
Let me come up here because that's, give me another minute. Yeah, that's a real major concern, I think, of the community. And if we're looking at any place for future growth in a smaller lot size, and I mean maybe quarter acre, 10,000, 20,000 square foot lots, then there are areas that need to be looked at that are compatible, at least in my mind, to do that. And there's some need for maybe some industrial zoning. So those are some major things that really need to be looked at. And the community's feelings need to be brought forward. Now, I'm just speaking as one person.
Well, I agree. I agree 100%.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that, when you say there isn't much to maybe rezone in the, in Loomis, we're looking at 20 years out. We're looking at the year, you know, 2040 or 2050. So what are we going to look like then? So I think that that is a concern with general public.
Okay. There's going to be many more opportunities to bring this up in public. Okay. More public comment?
Russ Kelly, 4246 Barton Road. I was here when we started all this stuff. And we really didn't have a complete idea of how it was going to come about. So we put the process together to make it work. I really like the idea, the direction that we're going to take a look at what the inconsistencies are and, you know, get a good path for what we need and where we're going to go in the future and that sort of thing. I like the process. I don't see any problems with, with having public input through that whole process as he's talking about. We're not going to lose anything. We're just going to take a look at first to see what's working, what's not working, and how we can make that better. And then take a look and see where we want to go. And I think that everything our consultant has said is exactly where we need to go. And I appreciate the town choosing the right person for the job, I think. We'll know that when we get done. But we do, we do appreciate the council taking the time to get the right people.
Thank you, Russ. Any other public comment?
When you guys were talking about the money, I just want to make sure I don't really understand money that much, but as, as much as I should. But just make sure that we spend as much money as we need to address the concerns of the town and that we shouldn't be short changings ourselves or trying to save money if we can help the town in any way.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Okay, singing, hearing none. We'll bring it back to council. Councilwoman Clark Creutz.
I think one of the things that came to my mind as I was hearing the public comment, and thank you very much for that, is, at least for me, the major component of this exercise is with our community and their involvement. And in no way would I ever accept the fact that we could have a general update without it and without robust community involvement. We've just come off of our referendum, and I think all of us realize that it's important for the community to be on the same page. And we absolutely cannot have this update without community involvement. And I just want everybody to know, at least as far as I'm concerned, and I'm sure some of my other council members, you have my word and my promise that no way can we do it without it. So just my feeling about that.
I actually think it's a great opportunity to bring the public forward. And I think everybody will learn throughout the process why we're doing this. And there's a lot of new people who've, who've moved in since we, including myself, since we did a general plan update. So I think it's going to be a great opportunity for everybody to better understand why we do the things that we're doing. And some of the constraints that we have based on state law, we just can't go out and do whatever we want with land use, right? There are, there are restraints and there are mandates and requirements. So I'm hopeful that the community will better understand some of the situations we're in. So I'm with you here, Jan. You good? Okay. Any other public comment? Or, sorry, council comment, questions?
Andy, would you please just introduce yourself to other people who may not be aware of...
Who I am?
Because he is an expert in...
Let's see. Graduated in 1971, Cal Poly, second class in city and regional planning. And quickly from there, traveled the country doing planning in Bangor, Maine, Woodland, California, Bakersfield, California, California Tahoe Regional Planning Agency, Breckenridge, Colorado. Then went into the private business, was the project manager for the Nevada County general plan update, was the project manager for the Folsom City Master Plan, General Plan, was the manager for the City of Auburn general plan update, was the manager for the Mariposa County general plan update, was lucky enough to do the Venezuelan, Eastern Venezuelan general plan update, the Dominican Republic general plan update, along with a number of things. Sutter Creek has been a client, and their general plan was just updated two weeks ago. So a fair amount of experience, a lot of experience in the Tahoe Basin, working with the TRPA and their various updates over the years up there.
And also on the planning commission for the county, county planning commission.
I am county planning commissioner, District 5. Thank you, Andy. Okay. Any other comments, questions from council? This is an informational item. No actions taken. We'll receive, well, there is direction, isn't there? Do you have, do you have?
Enough general direction.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the biggest, the biggest thing that we were looking for is, are there any issues with what Andy has described that council does not feel comfortable with moving forward? Or would you like to see any different direction?
Go ahead, Councilman Baker.
I like the way that, that Andy has headed. The reason being, has it's been such a hot topic, the village, and there's been a lot of misinformation in both directions because of inconsistencies within our general plan and our zoning. And those inconsistencies and conflict can create conflict within a community. And so I feel that it is very important that we actually go through, find all of those inconsistencies, and come to the public with those inconsistencies so that the public can help shape how we do those, how we rectify those things. So I think this process is very important. I think it's going to be a lengthy process with a lot of hearings. And I look forward to going through and resolving those issues and then kind of looking into the future and seeing where we're going.
Thank you, Brian. Okay. I'll piggyback on that. I think we're heading in the right direction. Okay. Thank you. We'll move on. Item 14, King Road interchange update. This is continued from April 9, 2019. And this has been an item that several people from the community have asked that we bring forward and discuss. So Britt, take it away.
Great. So I'm Britt Snipes, Public Works Director here in Loomis. And, you know, I hate to have to follow Mary Beth and Andy. So I was just sitting there thinking, you know, the only worst thing than an engineer showing slides of his vacation is an engineer showing slides of what he does for... is an engineer showing slides of what he does for a living. So I hope not to bore people too much. But today we need to talk about the King Road Interchange. This is a concept that has been around for about 20 years now. Is to make the overpass at King Road on I-80 an interchange. So back 20 years ago, the town of Loomis asked Caltrans what the possibility was, what their thoughts were on making a connection there on I-80. And their response was basically that I-80 is an interstate. It's a federal highway. And they don't just let you make connections to a federal highway. You have to, you have to go through a process, and one of those processes is justification. So they asked for a little justification. We didn't, you know, we were just saying at the time that it was going to relieve a little bit of pressure off of our Horseshoe Bar Road Interchange, but we didn't have any numbers or anything. So the council at the time decided to kind of continue the investigation and kind of look at that. We asked for some studies. We actually put into our traffic impact fee program a line item in there for a study to see what it would cost to do an interchange. We hired some consultants to do the, to do a study. We hired HMH to take a look at it. And one of the things they came up with was that the interchange is too close to Horseshoe Bar and it's too close to Penrun. When you get into the rural landscape, Caltrans likes to see at least three miles in between interchanges. Even in the urban areas, they don't allow connections within one mile of each other. And I believe we're a mile and a half between Penrun and Horseshoe Bar. So Caltrans does not want to see another connection to I-80. So one of the things that we looked at was this combining Horseshoe Bar and King. So what it would do is it would pull traffic off on basically a frontage road, bring them up to King. And then you'd have a frontage road that would run down to our current interchange at Horseshoe Bar. One of the problems that we have with Horseshoe Bar right now is that the off-ramps, the radius on that is too small. This is the current configuration, the smaller circle inside. The radius is too small, so when cars are peeling off of the freeway and they're coming up to a stop, they need to decelerate and before they get to that stop. And to do that safely, they've determined that that needs to be a wider curve. So this is kind of the new standard. So if we, if we did a combined interchange between King and Horseshoe Bar, we would have to end up building a frontage road parallel to the freeway. And then we'd have to move these ramps off to the side a bit and kind of make these radiuses bigger. And so the cost gets very large for land acquisition. At the time, the other thing too is that this frontage road goes right through Rayleigh's. So the Rayleigh's building would have to be modified substantially. And then the ramps, on-ramps and off-ramps on the other side of Horseshoe Bar there would end up, if you see, you can see it lines up with Walnut there. So that off-ramp would actually be extended to kind of move up to Walnut, go around the police station, come up where Jenny's office is right now. So that's how big that off-ramp would end up being. So at the time, council said that's not, you know, that's just undoable. So we decided to scrap that project and just try to concentrate on just off-ramps on King. But FHWA will not let us make a connection to the freeway. So we would have to petition that. Caltrans does not support us making another connection to the freeway. The county, part of this, part of the land for this is actually in the county. In the county, Placer County has no desire to pursue an off-ramp. They don't see a need for it. So we wouldn't get any support there. The money, okay, so we decided to completely scrap the idea of combining the interchanges. Pair it back to just one, we can't make the on-ramps and off-ramps work because this is too close to Horseshoe Bar. You cannot get people off of King Road and safely onto the freeway while the merged traffic is trying to get off onto Horseshoe Bar. And same going up. You can't have people coming on the freeway at Horseshoe Bar and safely merge onto the freeway while you're having people merge off of the freeway and try to get off to King. So that's why the frontage road concept was needed. So we scrapped the idea of combining the interchanges. Caltrans isn't going to let us just do an interchange at King. So one of the other suggestions that was made was to just do a slip ramp. Basically, just a slip ramp to get on the freeway from King. So we started to take a look at that. And physically, it's possible to do that, to build the ramp. But it's not physically long enough to have people, once they're accelerating to get on in that merged traffic, on people trying to get off onto Horseshoe Bar. So for that reason, I wouldn't recommend that we pursue even a slip ramp for King, having people get on the freeway at King. And the problem on the other side of the freeway there for people getting off of the freeway and onto King is that's in Placer County and that would have to go through Placer County. I mean, we would end up having to buy the right-of-way from Placer County. And like I said, they're, they have not shown any interest at all in pursuing slip ramps for just on and off ramps going one way or any kind of connection to the freeway. Let's see. So those are the, that is basically kind of laying it out. That FHWA doesn't want us to make a connection to it. Caltrans doesn't want it. County doesn't show any interest at all in it. The funding, as I penciled out in the staff report, just to do a connection at King and not combining it with Horseshoe Bar would be well over $31 million, and that's a conservative estimate. I don't know where that funding would even come from. We have a shortfall right now annually of $350,000 to just keep our roads in the condition that they're in. We have a shortfall of $350,000. So I don't know where we would, we would start getting money from. Nobody would give us a grant to even study the connection at King. So that's why I don't, I wouldn't recommend it at this time. But if we would like to pursue it, I have kind of laid out some options at the end of the staff report there. The next steps then would be to maybe set a committee, form a committee with some people in the, in the, you know, community that want an interchange at King. The other thing too, I'm not sure the residents on King would, or access off of King would like a, would like that connection too. So I don't know if they would be supportive of a connection there. So anyway, getting back to the next steps if we want to pursue this. I would recommend that we form a committee of interested people from the community. Then I think council would need to identify how much money and staff time that the town would like to invest in this venture. And then we could, it started with the committee and maybe report back to you. So at this point, is there any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Britt. Council, questions, comments? Jan.
Thanks, Britt. A couple of things. First of all, our traffic is horrific.
Correct.
Horrific on Taylor Road. And it's impassable. We also have a problem on I-80, people backing up onto the freeway. And much like on Highway 65, this is why they are doing their highway improvements there because they've had, you know, so many accidents. And unfortunately, I think that's going to happen to us. And we have, we have serious problems with getting onto our freeways and Taylor Road, and our population has not increased. So this traffic has nothing to do with the town, the citizens of Loomis. This is coming from all around us. And so I have a hard time believing that Caltrans and the highway and all that, they would just be like turning their, turning their face away from our problems. And so, I mean, I feel like we have a huge, huge problem. And I really want to see, you know, if there's anything we can do at all to help alleviate our traffic. How much would it cost for a slip ramp? Just, I know you said it was what, how much would that cost? Did you come up with a price for that?
It would be near the 31 million.
So it'd be the same as a full?
So I did a little bit of research on full interchanges being constructed, and they don't currently have an overpass. And those were sitting at about 41 million. So I would have to say it'd be very close to the 31 million to try to construct just a couple of slip ramps. Because we would have to buy the right-of-way. We would have to do, there's a tremendous amount of grading. The thing is, is that you've got a freeway that's down at one level and you've got an overpass that's at another level. You have to have those cars come off and safely get to the new elevation and, you know, to make that elevation difference.
Yeah.
There's a lot of grading and a lot of transition area there.
I mean, those bridges are very old. I know that they were just lifted, but I'm just saying. I'm saying, I hear what you're saying, but Loomis has a major problem. And so we need to come up with solutions. And so sometimes I think we might have to think out of the box a little bit. And I think somehow, some way, it might be beneficial some way down the road to have something at King Road because we're not getting the Boynton connection now. So anyway, so I'm just.
So the Boynton connection is actually going to be less expensive than a connection to the freeway. And the first thing that Caltrans asks you to do when you start talking about a new connection to the freeway is they make you do a study that shows that the existing facilities can't be improved to meet your traffic needs. And we have some problems with the Horseshoe Bar interchange that we need to start addressing. And that is in our five-year CIP for us to get started on. Number one, the first thing is a signal at the off-ramp from the freeway.
I would hate for that to take five years, though. I hope that that's on the top of the list.
It is. And it's one of these things that takes a very long time to do because I have to coordinate with Caltrans. Actually, Caltrans is going to have some skin in the game on that one. They're going to have to fund some of that, those intersection improvements. The other thing is the, so the first thing you have to do if you're going to do a connection to the freeway is show that your existing facilities can't be improved to meet the needs. The first thing that would daylight from that is that building Boynton to come down and then expanding Horseshoe Bar would fit our needs. And it would, it would meet our needs much better than making another connection to the freeway. And it has to do with that merge, with people trying to get off of the freeway and trying to get on the freeway. There's just physically not enough room in between King and Horseshoe Bar to do that.
I've heard that before, but I just.
It's, it is kind of hard to believe as you're driving it and you see the distances, but.
It's just extremely frustrating.
Right now, you notice that our on-ramp to, from Horseshoe Bar going south on I-80, the first thing we need to do is lengthen that ramp. And as we need to lengthen that ramp, we also start to run into that merging for the people getting off on Sierra College because that's two lanes coming off going onto Sierra College. So there's a lot of merging going on there. So the first thing is that merge lane. The next thing is the radius of these off-ramps that are currently there. Doesn't need to be widened out, the radius on that. There needs to be a stoplight at, on the off-ramp when you're coming up and you get off onto Horseshoe Bar, and then widening Horseshoe Bar would be the other eventual thing. Doc Barnes is in our circulation element to relieve a lot of traffic. The reason that we get so much traffic at Horseshoe Bar and Taylor is this conflict of people that are coming up Horseshoe Bar, trying to make a right to go to Deloro or the other schools. And then people just naturally coming up Taylor. You know, everybody's starting to experience a lot more traffic on all of our roads here in Loomis. And it's because people are driving with Google Maps or whatever GPS they've got. Their GPS is showing them that there's congestion on the freeway, but they're showing alternate routes. Since Taylor is a parallel facility to the freeway, but people are pulling off and going on Taylor, their apps are not showing that they have congestion on Taylor because they don't monitor the congestion on Taylor. They don't monitor the congestion on Laird Street or Barton. So people are coming off and taking these alternate routes, and that's what's adding to a lot of our traffic. Plus, you know, now people have realized you can take the Horseshoe Bar exit, find some backroads and get over to Auburn-Folsom. Whereas before, it's kind of winding around so much that people couldn't find their way. It was too frustrating. But now with GPS, they're finding it. And there's, you know, the prevailing speed on these roads is getting pretty high, too. It's concerning.
Anybody else?
Britt, thank you. I'm one of the lucky ones that gets to travel on the highways and roads probably more than most. And Loomis has, does have a traffic problem, but it's a pass-through traffic problem, just like you explained. It's people coming up Taylor. If we looked at our traffic studies, our most recent traffic studies, it's Horseshoe Bar, Taylor, King, Sweatsor, Horseshoe Bar, Taylor to Deloro, Horseshoe Bar, Taylor, King. And so when you look at the flow of traffic as we go through all of our traffic studies, you know, we've kind of got some things that hit us hard. We have three schools within a half mile of each other. We have, you know, so finding real-world solutions of things that are actually going to help, I'm definitely interested in a slip ramp at King. Man, I just don't even see that being a good option, to be honest. I just look at that short distance. I get on and off freeways constantly. I had somebody in front of me get on at Horseshoe Bar and 80 the other morning at 6:00 AM at a whopping speed of 27 miles an hour. And it was quite the experience. So I think alleviating some of that problem right there at Horseshoe Bar, I think Caltrans would have a much bigger appetite for than they would something over at King.
Duncan. Okay, so just to be clear, we have identified some solutions to fixing some of our traffic issues. And you can find that in the housing element, or sorry, the circulation element. It identifies at least a dozen priority projects that will alleviate some of our hot points. And so the big ticket, the big question is, what projects do we need or how many projects are there? It really comes down to money. And we, SECOG has identified the Horseshoe Bar expansion on their MTP. And that's really how you get into the funding rounds, right? At the tune of about $15 million. In order to get a project like that, the town's going to have to come forward with a ton of money just to, just as far as skin in the game, right? Millions of dollars. Right now, we've got less than that. We've got less than a million dollars to put towards a Horseshoe Bar expansion, right? We got 6 million? Set aside? Well, let's be clear, Loomis is not getting both. We don't get a King Road, a $30 million-plus project, and a Horseshoe Bar expansion in any of our lifetimes. That's not happening. I have no interest whatsoever in pursuing a King Road on-ramp or off-ramp at all. It's just not, it's not financially feasible. We are not in any position, we're running deficits on the roads that we have right now. We've got $7 million in deferred maintenance on our drainage and our infrastructure that we have no idea how we're going to pay for. our infrastructure that we have no idea how we're going to pay for. A lot of people think Costco's going to be the save-all, the cure-all, but Costco's not going to fix all of our problems if Costco happens. And so, we've got so many projects that we have identified as high priority. I'd like to see the town start funding those projects first, but first, we've got to find the funding. It's just not about identifying the projects, it's about finding the money to do that. And we don't have a lot of those funding sources. Let's just be real about what Loomis is. We are not sitting on millions of dollars every year in, in income to, to fund these projects. So, I think, you know, let's, let's be real about, about King Road. Why are we talking about it? Because I think a lot of people are frustrated about traffic. People are trying to figure out alternatives on how to alleviate what we have. But we've already identified things that can fix or start to repair some of our, our, our traffic. Just to put it in perspective, Brett, I think your point in that we spend about $350,000 a year, actually, we're, we're behind $350,000 a year in deferred maintenance. And so, we've got, we've got to bridge that gap just to fill the potholes in the, the roads that we're not, we're not repairing. Loomis does not have millions of dollars, again, millions of dollars to spend every year on new projects. It should also be noted that it would be a huge help if we had development that would fund new roads, right? New on-ramps and on-ramps, off-ramps and on-ramps are largely funded by development, and we don't have development in Loomis. And we're slated, we're forecasted to, to grow at less than 1% a year for the next 25 years. So, I don't see a, a, a big upkick in development in Loomis that would otherwise afford funding mechanisms to, to, to build new roads. So, that's, that's my, that's my take on things. I'd like to hear what, what the community thinks as far as a King Road on-ramp. I'll leave it there. Anybody else? Okay. Let's open it up for public comment.
Miguel Ukivich, 5911 Craig Court, Loomis, California. Well, here I am, folks, a 20-year person that said, "Let's put this ramp in." Why did I say that? Because I saw what Rosehill did, they had an opportunity to make a real good on and off-ramp at Douglas, and they chose not to. So, let's get back to the facts and figures. I just saw in the news today where Sacramento County is putting a new freeway overpass and ramps and all down by the airport, $14 million. The project at Sierra College, $25 million. Our town engineer is absolutely ridiculous with his cost figures, seriously. There's no way in the world that this would cost that much. So, find another engineering firm. On the point of just an on-ramp at King, sure, there would be some major problems. Originally, there is a way of putting it in, and it's called an acceleration lane, and the state allows that. The only problem is you might have to take out part of it, and he's being very honest about it. But it's called an acceleration lane. But getting back to the main point is that there's enough room. We're only 500 feet short. If you go to Auburn, it, there's three on-ramps within a half-mile of each other in Auburn, the downtown area. So, people can do it. It would take lobbying. So, what's, what's the value of trying to get an on-ramp at King Road? It was kind of interesting that the town engineer said, "Well, the people on King wouldn't want it." But when we were talking about Doc Barnes' drive, he didn't say the people on King wouldn't want Doc Barnes, because that was going to bring all the traffic down. But the major thing is, in the long run, in the future, 10 years from now or so, Horseshoe Bar, even if you widen the overcrossing, where are they going to go? You're going to take out the Veterans Hall and those things? You can't make Horseshoe Bar wider. So, you need some other method of getting people through downtown Loomis and on Horseshoe Bar. This was the thought. I think if you pursued it at the federal, the state, and local level, that you might be able to find out that you can put on that on-ramp. And the cost would be under 10, eight or nine million. Thanks.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to know how much of that $31 million price tag involves widening the bridge deck of King Road, because I don't believe that's necessary to have a project there.
I didn't break it out into that kind of detail. I don't even think I considered widening the existing facility.
It's not necessary to widen the bridge deck, which is a large part of, I think, the, the cost of that project. If you had a roundabout at the intersection of Boynton with the future Doc Barnes and King Road, there'd be sufficient sightline to have the existing deck as it is, and have traffic move through there, and then on to the freeway. Now, the configuration, this might be a little different. It might be a little more like an oval, but you could get the traffic on there. All Loomis needs is an on-ramp. We don't need a full intersection. We don't need to involve the county. All five of your obstacles you are citing, I think, can be overcome, including Caltrans. I think Caltrans will buy into this. And I think ultimately, there would be the money. Don't let this possibility slip away. Don't let any development occur there where this could have an on-ramp in the future. Whether we get this five years or 15 years from now, it has to happen for Loomis, because there's no other way of relieving the traffic in Loomis, unless you take out the, the railroad. And I don't think that's going to happen. You may have this.
Bob Rhodes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Pam Blake Angelo Drive, "I've lived here for 35 years, and I've seen the," I'll start my timer, "and I've seen the traffic, and I listened carefully to what Brett has to say, and to our mayor. And we are talking lots of money, but I'm looking at the King Road as it's not even being feasible to have an on and off-ramp. And the other options that you had brought up with the slip, whatever, I'm looking at it at a liability issue between Horseshoe and Penrin with, like you said, people getting off the freeway, but people will also be merging on the freeway, and with the crazy drivers and stuff, that I would be against having a King Road interchange, even though it could possibly help with the traffic. But it's just, it's just too close. And I don't know what other options we can, you know, come up with, because every time there's an accident on the freeway, they get off. Because I used to be one of those commuters on a commuter bus, and I was stuck in traffic. So, the people that use the freeway also get off onto Taylor Road. So, I don't know what we can do. I know the traffic is bad, but I would be against it. Thank you.
Thank you.
William Conville, 6280 Horseshoe Bar Road. As Brett contests, the traffic on Horseshoe Bar Road is a little above whatever it's rated now, or it's worse. In the mornings, it's like a two-lane 65. You can't believe, I'm in a 25 mile an hour zone right there on a little curve, and nobody goes 25. And it's unsafe, literally, for me to get out of my driveway. And this has happened over the last four years. When I first moved in there, I mean, you had a little bit of traffic in the morning, people going to work and school. You had a little traffic about 2:00 when Del Oro got out. And you had some people, and by 7:00, there was nobody. I was out there at 12:30 the other day walking my dog, and the traffic was horrible. I'm like, where are all these cars coming from? Because all of the growth outside of Loomis is all feeding right up Horseshoe Bar Road. And it's becoming dangerous, because these people, I, I hate to say it, I think a lot of them are suits, just my personal opinion, and they have no concern for the fact that we're a small town, and we, we moved here not to be doing that. But it's getting really bad during the day. So, I don't know what's going to be done, but we've got to figure out some way to just at least slow them down, because they're just flying out there. And it's not just where I live, it's anywhere out on those backroads. I mean, there are 35 and 40 zones, and I drive my big ugly van, the speed limit, and you'd be surprised, some of the people who tell me how much they like me, I'm always number one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Mike Lukin, Executive Director of Placerville County Transportation Agency, as you all know. And, and Brian is a member of our, our board. We are the transportation planning agency for the county. All state and federal dollars with transportation and local dollars from transportation sales tax flow through our agency. And so, we work very closely with, with Brett and all the other Public Works Directors in the county to, to fund projects. And, and for the most part, we leave it up to the towns and cities to prioritize your needs. And, and then our job is to go out and lobby for more funding for you, or find other funding sources. And we, we have identified in our expenditure plan for a potential future sales tax measure, $15 million as matching funds for the Horseshoe Bar interchange. And that is in our adopted expenditure, expenditure plan that our board adopted a few months ago. But really, that's the, the need for that was, was seen as exactly what you're talking about tonight. You're faced with pass-through traffic. You don't have a lot of development happening in your community. But we felt that that was a, a regional asset that needs to be improved in the long term. We worked with Brett very closely to try to get Caltrans to reexamine the King Road interchange. Frankly, Caltrans didn't even want to write the letter that they did, that's in the staff report, because they, conditions hadn't changed. The Highway Design Manual, which is what regulates the federal government and the state of California to, to set the parameters for how close you locate interchanges and on-ramps. It's not just interchanges, it's on-ramps, too. States that it, as Brett correctly said, one mile in an urban area and three miles in a suburban or rural area. And so, Caltrans, again, restated that they, they, this would not be acceptable to them to have an interchange or on-ramp located at the King Road interchange. I'm sorry to say, that's, that's the reality of that. And they would not allow us to move forward with any project study report or anything like that, because they are actually the owners of the property. They own the interchange, they own the freeway. And, and so, they, they have a vested interest in making it safe. Also, and I'm out of time here, but I wanted to give you some examples in the county of this. And one of the things you know is, we're upgrading the Highway 65 Interstate 80 interchange right now, very, very large project. In order to implement that project, we actually have to close the Taylor Road off-ramp, because it's too close to Eureka. So, we're closing an off-ramp, which, you know, hundreds of thousands of cars go through every single day to access Rockland. And we are eliminating that and basically diverting it, somewhat similar to what you're talking about with Boynton, basically putting that back onto Eureka. So, if you want to get on Taylor in the future, when we complete that project, you will have to get off at Eureka to access Taylor. We're also working on a project right now up in Colfax, where they, we're putting in a roundabout to access State Highway 174 and Interstate 80. And we actually, Caltrans, as a condition of that project, is making us greatly increase those on-ramps. And so, short off-ramps are also not acceptable to them. So, we have some local examples here. And unfortunately, I'm, I'm here not the bearer of good news, but, but to really say that what Brett has found and, and what Caltrans has said in their letters is correct.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Mike, will you stay up there? Got a question for you.
Thank you very much for coming, Mike. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Question for you. You said that there's $15 million set aside for the Horseshoe Bar Road interchange as a matching fund, and that's as long as the sales tax measure is approved. Is that correct?
Yeah. We're going through a process right now to, to determine whether or not we want to do a, a sales tax measure, and that's going to go through June of next year. But as part of that, we look at what are the projects in that, that should be funded in that. And so, we have about $1.2 billion worth of projects in there. And the, the Horseshoe Bar interchange, and we, we forecast going after state and federal funding. And so, we put $15 million in that anticipating the, that we would be able to be successful in matching state or federal funding for that interchange.
And I know that Loomis is sort of on the bubble of being included in that sales tax measure, because based on voters', you know, preferences, if Loomis is not a part of the sales tax measure, would we still get the $15 million matching?
That is a tough question, and that is a question that our, our board will have to grapple with. But I would say, again, just in your discussion tonight, I mean, you hit the nail right on the head, that these are regional issues. And so, our desire would be to have Loomis in and be part of the district, and be part of the governing body that helps implement very much needed improvements to transportation in our South County. But we would, we would have to, it would be a tough discussion to say whether that was, was in or not. There are other interchanges that are in, just to, to give you that, those facts as well. We have that. We also have Rockland Road. Rockland Road interchange is a very expensive interchange, upwards of $80 million to put that interchange in there. So, as well as Nelson Road interchange in, in Lincoln. Those are the three interchanges that we have currently in the expenditure plan.
Thank you. I just want to point out how important it is for the citizens of Loomis to pay attention to the sales tax measures that are coming up, because obviously, I think we could be deeply impacted by whether we are in or out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Any other public comment?
I would just like to say about the GPS thing, when people go from Tahoe up to, or from the Bay Area up to Tahoe, and then they come back, that's like the number one thing that they get on their GP, on their Google Maps, is to go through Taylor Road, because I drive back, yeah. So, but I don't see why we couldn't like make this a good thing, because about, we're about halfway between them, or not really halfway, it's a little farther. So, I don't know if we could like get some business out of that, like drive it, drive us into the downtown with the new project that we were talking about earlier with the brewery and whatever. I just thought that the more people we have in our town, maybe the more business we could, we could generate. And so, that's kind of how I felt about, about that. And then also, the Horseshoe Bar thing, I just got my, my license, and I almost get killed all the time on that interchange, because all the truckers come. So, I think that enlarging that would be a good idea.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi, I'm Deborah Crosby, 577, there at King Road. A lot of the traffic has to do with the fact that there are three schools in a row. And I know Loomis has bike, bike lanes, but has the city considered making it even more bike-friendly? Because, you know, just going from King up Webb, there's no sidewalk. There's, you know, there are a lot of areas where, you know, with this new wonderful development that's going to happen with the LBB, there's going to be even more congestion on Taylor. And just really thinking outside of the box, like bike paths that do parallel the train tracks, or something to keep people who do, and even doing, you know, the public bike, jump bike kind of program in Loomis, just has a possibility to cut back on some of the, would that be a little more cost-effective? Or, and I know it's not going to change the fact that people have to get on the freeway to get to work, you know, wherever they work. But for at least the families going to Del Oro or the other neighboring schools, to have that as a possibility, might cut back on some of that intensity right at Taylor and Horseshoe Bar. My two cents.
We, we do have a walkable, walkability and pedestrian bicycle plan that we've, we've established in identifying routes and improvements moving forward. And so, that, that does exist.
Oh, good.
And so, we, when, when we review projects, we, we try our best to incorporate those standards in, in new housing and new, in any new development, any new construction. So, a plan does exist.
Oh, good.
It's our job to implement.
Well, we'd love to hear more about it. Okay, thanks.
It can be found on our website. It can be found on our website.
Russ Kelly, 4246 Barton Road. One of the things I have noticed is right here that we do get the backup there. And that's absolutely insane, when you've got people going 70 miles an hour on the freeway. However, when they get off the freeway, I don't know how many people actually go through town to get out on King Road. I don't have the traffic studies to say who goes where. I think that's one of the things that we definitely have got to have. It seems to me that if you have a frontage road going right up here, you can go on the King, you may not want to go left on King, but you can get King. If the traffic's going this way, and they get off the freeway, and it's an option to come up here, then they're up to King already. Okay? I think we have a lot of traffic going up to Penron and coming off back to King. Okay? Again, I don't know what the exact figures are, but it seems to me that what we could do is make sure that we, when they get off here, we just go on the frontage road. Okay? And I think I heard somebody say, "Well, the county owns that." Well, you know what? The county don't own that. Whoever owns the property owns that. It's in the county and has to go through the county to get approved, and this gentleman here tonight, I mean, that's what they do, is they work through the agencies to get things done. So I think this would be one really good alleviator of stopping that traffic from backing up on the road, depending on, you know, what the traffic studies are. I don't have a solution for getting from King back here to the freeway. You know, going through Rayleigh's, I don't think is a good idea, but it's too bad we didn't have that Boynton extension coming down through there, and somebody else would have paid for that, but it's obviously not going to happen right now. So we need to maybe look at things one at a time, based on what the traffic actually says. I mean, we can guess all day long, until you know where those people are going, it doesn't make any difference what we think. Okay? Somebody will think it's still bothering them, getting on or off the freeway.
Thank you, Russ. Any other public comment? Okay, we'll close the public comment and bring it back to Council. Britt, what part of Rayleigh's would they have to take out? Like the meat department, does that go?
Pete's Coffee.
Pete's Coffee?
Pete's Coffee. Would be a drive-through.
Right. So Miguel wants to get Pete's Coffee out of here. Okay, I'm just kidding with you. All right. Thanks for your presentation. Any other questions, comments? Okay. We want to give direction to staff.
I think it's obvious we have a problem. Okay? And while it may not be feasible in some people's minds for the King Road off-ramp, I think it's just important that we keep our minds and ideas open on trying to solve the problem. And so I'm all about solving problems. So that's the direction I'd like to go in.
So in the very near future, we're going to be, you know, with the general plan update, talking about our circulation element. And I think we need to revisit some of the things that were discussed in the circulation element, the last update. You know, there were some traffic circle, some roundabouts that were suggested and are currently in our circulation element, and I've heard from a lot of residents that they don't like the ideas of roundabouts. So I think we need to revisit that in front of the residents and talk about that, about the community, about the benefits of those and the drawbacks of those, and if that's what we want to do there. Our last circulation element update, we decided we wanted to keep Taylor a two-lane facility. It has traffic on it now that warrants a four-lane facility, two lanes in each direction. We decided we wanted to keep parades, stoplights, the no raised mediums, things that would have been able to get traffic through that section quicker. We decided we didn't want to do it in our last circulation element. We also have the Swetzer Street Extension that would parallel the tracks on the other side of the tracks, and that would take a lot of the traffic that we have going up to our business park up in Swetzer, and it would give us a parallel facility to Taylor, take a lot of traffic off of that. But the problem that I don't think they saw when they drew that out was, all these properties in here that are not developed and not going to be developed, we would end up having to buy that land. You know, because if it's not going to be developed and we want to build the road, we have to buy the land and build the road. If it's going to get developed, we can have them donate the land and build the road for us. Same thing with Dock Barns. These are three distinct property owners that are along here, depending on what projects they build, bring forward for those. We will be able to get them to build a section of Dock Barns, but not all of it. So there's going to be some sections that we're going to have to buy and pay for the road. And then we also have to decide if we want to keep Horseshoe Bar a two-lane facility. If we do, we've got to find some parallel facilities, some parallel routes, because in my opinion, we're not going to see a decrease in traffic. We're going to see more traffic as time goes on. You know, everybody around us is growing, and even though Loomis wants to say a small town, we have to account for the people that are going to be driving through our town, because public roads are public roads, and everybody has the right to use them. So.
Thank you, Britt. There's no question, there's a need to fix some of these problems. Maybe what this conversation does is help get people's wheels turning on how to start funding some of these things. If we're not carved into the special tax district that PCTPA is proposing, we've got a lot of heavy lifting to do, just to stay afloat with what we have without any new stuff. So I think the community really has to figure out, you know, how are we going to fund these kind of things? Because we don't have a lot of money coming in for roads, and certainly not new roads. So let's keep talking about it. Right? Okay. Moving on. Item eight, going back to item eight, the resolution of the town to authorize town manager to execute an agreement with Todd Hewlett.
Yep.
Is that you, Sean?
I'll just update you on that. As GeoCon pulled out all of the contaminated soil, and like Sean was saying, we encountered some groundwater, they used up the money in their earthwork portion of their contract to backfill the bottom of that hole, to fill the hole up to where the standing water was going to come in. So we asked Todd Hewlett to, he was going to truck all the dirt from the future parking lot area to backfill the hole. He gave us a great price on that, and I asked him to give us a price to bring in the equipment and compact the fill and backfill the hole with the dirt that he moved over there. He revised his estimate. The price is reasonable, and it's less than what it would cost our forces to do.
Okay.
So that's why we updated the, or revised the amount on that.
Got it. Comments from Council? Questions? Okay, let's open up for public comment. Public comment. Seeing and hearing none. Do you want to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Noes. Item eight passes. Thank you, Britt. Let's move on to committee reports. Start down here with Mr. Duncan.
Okay, so the hot topic is Pioneer, and it's electric rate scheme. So as I said earlier, I'm going to have a little forum at the library at 2:00 AM on Friday, October 16th. I just want to say, you know, I'm for Pioneer as well, so I would be raising rates on myself. So I looked at my last bill, and in scenario one, we raised the rates that we're talking about, if you're using 700 kilowatt hours per month, it equals to $11 more a month on our section of the bill. So for me, because I always go over, according to PG&E, I'm a bad customer, I go over, so it costs me $12 a month extra. But PG&E is, they have some funding mechanisms, one is called the PCIA, which is the power charge indifference allotment. PCIA is, it's not perfect to the bulk of customers if everyone moves away to Pioneer, if their contracts are in existence. Because in the electricity business, you know, it's not like any other business, you have to have contracts in place, and you have to have long-term contracts in place for resource adequacy. So there's a lot of rules and regulations about, you know, having resource adequacy, and if you don't have that, when you do your purchasing, then you can get fined heavily. So right now, some of the CCAs are still involved that are lobbying, basically, to try to change that PCIA, so it's not such a high charge against, you know, Pioneer customers and other CCAs. That's one thing that they're looking at. And then resource adequacy is another thing that investment-owned utilities sometimes, believe it or not, use little tricks to upgrade your bill. So resource adequacy could be one of those. They just had a big article in Sacramento B, a whole page regarding that. But what has actually happened is we, the CCAs, are trying to lobby the legislators, and they did write a letter to PUC, who regulates the energy corporations and stuff, that PG&E would not hold back the resource adequacy from CCAs. So it's very complicated issues that need some detailed, you know, and time to go over and everything. So I encourage anyone who's interested, please come to the library on August 16th at 10:00 AM. And like I said, here on the board, I did receive one email from a gentleman from Rockland, and I didn't want to overstep my boundaries, but I did offer a meet with him, and I directed him to Pioneer Agendas, where we've been working on this for two and a half months. It's not like a, I know the hot word thing would be is to give away free electricity, but I'm trying to look at this from a business standpoint, and any startup that runs, you know, especially energy startup, is not going to survive very long by giving free electricity away. So we've got to keep that in consideration if we want PG&E, you know, to be our monopoly, and that's what we can have possibly. So that's all I have to report from Pioneer at this moment.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Jan?
The only thing I have to report is, we had our first borders meeting. Mayor and Durco and Sean and I had a very positive meeting with Rockland, and I'm sure Mayor and Durco might go into a little bit more detail about that, but that's about all I have to report.
Okay, thank you. Well, on that, so we do have a Borders Committee, and Jan and I sit on that, and we did meet with Rockland and our counterparts over there. We discussed Costco and development on our borders. Their concern remains the traffic, and we all have to get that right. So we're trying our best to make sure that the model that we bring forward, or that Costco brings forward, rather, is our best shot at this, because we all have to live with the legacy of traffic, no matter what it is. And so we are all trying our best to get it right. Let's see, I sit on SECOG, and although we were in a summer recess, we're going back into session in August, and we are going to be getting reports and a lot of RENA housing allocation talk from the state and from SECOG. So I will report more on that, but that's a heated, that's a topic that's coming up, and we're going to start doing workshops on RENA for anybody who might not be familiar with RENA. The state, every five or six years, comes and tells us how much affordable housing and low-income housing we have to zone for. It really is top-heavy, and so we are going to have to update what we call our housing element throughout that process. And that requires hearings and community input, and so that will start heating up in 2019 and '20. Let's see, there's been a lot of discussion about our Civic Lab, they're doing great stuff in giving ideas on how to better improve our downtowns and our commercial corridors, that is a really big topic, revitalization of commercial corridors is a big topic around SECOG, because I think a lot of counties and cities around are facing these blighted areas, and they're trying to repurpose how to better use their commercial corridors. And so we're learning from other communities on their best practices, we get a lot of expertise from folks who come in and give us thoughts on how to improve. If you look downtown on Taylor, it's 50% vacancy, if not more, right now. And so it has been an emphasis of councils of ours in strategic planning and throughout the last few years, on how to best address the vacancy problems that we have. But we're not alone, this is a unique problem for Loomis, it's in a lot of places. So lots of work to do and lots of support from the SECOG folks. That's my report. I'll leave it to Brian, if you have anything.
I have nothing this month. PCTPA didn't have a board meeting, so we got off.
Okay. And with that, any future agenda items from anyone? We'll open up for public comment, any future agenda items that folks would like to see for next month? Seeing and hearing none, Council, we good?
We're good.
Motion adjourned? Thank you.
Yes.
I'm going to drop off a couple of bills, just in the interim, one of them is going to have a tight schedule, I talked to Sean about being in a lot of time.